Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank you for coming out to the Education Center tonight. We welcome you here for our Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education's special meeting tonight for the purpose of a public hearing on the WR Odell Elementary School redistricting plan. And so I call the meeting to order at this time. And Board members, everyone's here except for one member, I think Ms. Blackwater, she's said she wouldn't be here. So we're all here, and I need a motion tonight that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. The agenda's set. Now, we need to do, this is sort of an unusual thing because we usually have all this approved and ready to go before we actually get started, but I need a motion that the Board approve to hold this attendance boundaries for WR Odell Elementary School, this redistricting public hearing. Do I have a motion that this hearing be approved?
Removed.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the approval of this meeting has been approved, so we're good to go on that. All right, now, the next thing on our agenda is we need to have a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion that the public hearing for WR Odell redistricting plan be approved? Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, our next subject here is the speakers. All right, now, the first speaker that I have, and incidentally, you know, those of you that are signed up to speak, you've got a copy of the agenda, I hope, so you'll know where you are on this agenda list. And whenever I call your name, like Mr. Kirk showed you, come to the podium, and whoever's next sort of be sitting on ready, so we'll just keep this thing rolling right on, okay? Our first speaker tonight is Kevin Carey, and he's going to be speaking from the residence on Hat Creek Lane. And so if Kevin Carey is here, please come forward.
Before I begin, I just have a procedural question. I would like to pass these out to the Board members.
You can give those to Ms. Monroe.
Okay.
Ms. Monroe's our Board Clerk. She can give them to her, and then she'll pass them on down to us.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, and then...
So I think you're ready to go. You've got five minutes.
Great, thank you. Good evening. When I first saw the updated redistricting proposal that moved the farm to Boger Elementary, I wanted to picket the school board. I wanted to create signs that had the acronym FARM, Families Against Redistricting Malarkey. But then I thought better of it. Because I trust that you, the school board, will see this proposal for what it really is. You're reasoned individuals, and I know that you must realize exactly what kind of precedent this will set. Plucking a neighborhood such as the farm with no geographic connection to Boger's district at all is the kind of precedent that should worry any family in Cabarrus County. By implementing this proposal, you would be saying that redistricting borders are simply arbitrary, and that any neighborhood could be a target. Is that the kind of message that you want to send to people who want to buy homes here? I credit Dr. Sane and her staff for attempting to think outside the box with this proposal, but sometimes thinking outside the box leaves the wrong people outside in the cold. This proposal is based on flawed logic. Based on the information we received, the reason for the move is because Cabarrus County Schools could save $300,000. Yet, based on the information that we have, the new proposal does not in fact save money. It only shifts transportation money for the five buses needed for Boger back to Odell. The children from the first proposal still need to be bused somewhere, whether it is Odell or Boger. The letter also cited that the farm is a high-growth neighborhood, but did you know that there were more closings in the first recommended area than in the farm last year? Based on sales projections and your .318 standard ratio, the farm would bring in 10 students per year to Odell for the next three years. 10 students per year. That is hardly high growth. Your letter also states that the farm's students will go either to the new school or back to Odell in three years. But is Odell really still an option at this point? The letter we received said yes. However, an email that Board Member Grace Minnet sent to a neighbor of mine says otherwise. In that email, Ms. Minnet states unequivocally that the farm's students would be assigned to the new school. She also states that rising 5th graders would continue to be bused to Odell when the letter we received stated that parents would have to provide their own transportation. These kinds of changes in communication disconnect do not reflect well on how this proposal was put together. Many school districts take months, but Cabarrus County has only taken a few weeks. This proposal was created in 10 days, which I find a little ironic since it took 10 days for me to get a response about when I asked Dr. Sane's staff about the enrollment numbers for particular neighborhoods. And yes, I did follow up several times. You can change the lives of more than 100 students in 10 days, but you can't provide pertinent information through a simple email to a parent in the same timeframe? That, along with the fallacies I've demonstrated, illustrate how rushed this proposal must The fact that this proposal was so rushed is not the only reason that I am optimistic that you will do the right thing. I'm optimistic because I know that you, as a school board, understand how unsatisfying the option of having these kids moved twice would be. In fact, here's some of what you guys said at the last meeting. Mr. Fur, at the last meeting, you said, "None of us want to move kids more than once. We want to do the right thing." Ms. Carpenter, you said at the last meeting, "I don't agree with moving kids twice in a three-year period." And Ms. Minnet, you said, "It doesn't make sense to move kids in the western corner when they will move again." Many of the kids who will be affected are here tonight, including my son Alden. Coming out, buddy. That's all right. These kids and the rest of the students at the farm deserve better. The longer bus rides and longer commutes for parents will mean less participation and less connection to the school overall. Why would you expect the students at Boger to attempt to build friendships with our kids, the ones from that faraway neighborhood who will be gone in two years? How is that fair to Alden or anyone else from the farm? None of that makes sense, but there is another proposal that does. I would ask you to reconsider a modified version of the first proposal, eliminating the northwestern corner of the county. The packet I have created explains more. Doing that would still move 80 kids, but those children would be twice as close to Boger as our students and much less likely to move again. It is also consistent with current Cabarrus County boundaries and does not arbitrarily single out one neighborhood. No neighborhood and no kids deserve that. They matter, and keeping them from making unnecessary moves matters too. You said that yourself. Now it's time to put your action behind your words and show that this process is more than just malarkey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Okay, our next speaker is David Westner, and David is an Odell parent. So David, come on up, and you've got three minutes, and the clock starts when you do. Thank you.
My name's David Wester. I had a speech prepared, but I abandoned it at the last minute. I just want to speak. I feel well-qualified to speak today. I've read the emails, I've looked at the maps, I've talked to everyone I could think of about this. I've studied, I've looked at other redistricting programs' results. I drove the route from our neighborhood at the farm to Boger. I took my children to Boger. I went and looked at the old Odell. I went from Pelham Point, Wellington Chase to Boger. For the life of me, I just, I can't understand why this proposal changed from the first one to the one that we're currently talking about now. Because of that, I propose, I have a proposal for you. I think you guys would approve of it because, in fact, it was your first proposal. Logistically, I'm not sure how many of you, I'm sure you're aware of our neighborhood and how it sits, and you've seen it on a map, and all of you are, many of you are county residents, long-term county residents, but if any of you have actually driven from our neighborhood at the farm in a vehicle and left our neighborhood, taken a right on Shiloh Church, driven the mile and a half down to the new grocery store, McDonald's, taken a left, driven another mile to Pelham Point, and then another half a mile past Wellington Chase, it just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, it's basically, going back to what Kevin said, my proposal is basically to go back to your original proposal with the exception of the northwest corner. Besides that, I don't really have anything else to say, but your original proposal just seemed to make more sense and was just much more fair. And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Wester, thank you very much for being here. Our next speaker is Ms. Heather Rushing. She is also another Odell parent. So Ms. Rushing, when you get here, you can start, and the clock will start also.
My name is Heather Rushing. I'm a resident of the farm at Riverpoint, and I'm a parent at Odell Elementary. Your plan to redistrict the farm at Riverpoint raises many concerns for me. First, the distance of Boger Elementary from the farm at Riverpoint and the travel time involved to reach the school and return home. Second, the quickness of which the Board made the decision to redistrict our neighborhood considering we were not included in your original redistricting plan. Third, when Boger Elementary reaches student capacity and becomes overcrowded, what is your plan to handle that overcrowding? And fourth, by redistricting the farm at Riverpoint multiple times, our children's learning communities will be disrupted, thus interrupting their learning continuity. Of these concerns, I feel the disruption of learning communities will be the most detrimental. The farm at Riverpoint belongs to a community at Odell Elementary. Our children and our families have established relationships at Odell Elementary. These relationships with other parents, teachers, administrators, staff, and friends have been formed and strengthened over many years. My son is a kindergartner at Odell Elementary and loves attending. He has already formed strong relationships with teachers, staff, and peers in multiple grade levels at Odell. Asking him and our community's children to rebuild these relationships and learning communities multiple times is a great burden to place upon them. By redistricting our neighborhood, you are essentially destroying our relationships that we have built at Odell and asking all of us to start over. Not only are you asking us to do this once, but a second time as well when a new school is built. I feel your decision to redistrict the farm at Riverpoint was made in haste and needs more consideration than what you were planning. There are other options that have been or will be presented to help relieve the problem of overcrowding at Odell Elementary. I'm asking you to please reconsider your decision to redistrict the farm at Riverpoint. Thank you.
Thank you also, Ms. Rushing. Yes?
Can you clarify that no decision has been made?
Oh, yeah, there's no decision been made. This is just a public hearing, you know? And also, let me interject this, so, you know, while you're here, and we'll be getting Mr. Chris Mills to come up to the mic, and while he's coming, I wanted to tell you this, that a number of years ago, I remember, because I was on the Board, when we built the new elementary school in the Bethel community. And Robert, you was with us on that when we did that. We had to do a satellite redistricting at that time, where we brought children as far as nine miles away from the school because there were seats there. And basically, that's what we're looking for is seats, and there are seats at Boger, and of course, that affects you, but, you know, but the Cox Mill Elementary as well, there are 1,300 kids. And so, but there are seats at Carl A. Fur, and we are duty-bound to put these children in overcrowded schools, in schools that were their seats. And, but anyway, this is a time for you to talk to us, not us talk to you. This is a public hearing, and this is where you talk to us. But there's no decision made. The decision was supposed to be made on November the 5th. That's when we'll have our vote, next Monday night. And the Board will take what you have to say and take it on advisement, and then when we come back together again on November the 5th, that's the time that we will make a decision, one way or however which way it goes. But anyway, let's move on to our next speaker, is Mr. Chris Mills here? Come on up, Chris, and tell us what you've got.
Good evening. Chris Mills, I'm a resident of the farm and an Odell parent. I want to thank the distinguished Board and my neighbors for allowing me to speak tonight. I know the Board has a difficult decision to make, and trust that you will all put a lot of thought into that decision while considering the impact and effect it will have on our children and our community. First, we understand that some kids will have to move to Boger. Regardless of which communities are ultimately redistricted, the families and their children will think it is unfair, as we think it's unfair to single out the farm. It seems the fairest way to redraw the lines would be to allow the Boger district to expand like a balloon, effectively drawing in the communities that currently border their district, not to draw an arbitrary line around a community that lies well within the current borders of Odell. I want to refer to the comments of Mr. Kiger from October 8th. You said you wanted to pick apart Dr. Sane's plan. You wanted to find something wrong with it, but in your words, you said she'd done her homework. I agree. Dr. Sane came up with a fair, equitable, and decisive plan that made sense, a plan that would be fair to everyone involved and was not prejudicial. She looked at the geography and redrew the lines in the most logical way, and the Board initially agreed with her and didn't even consider the farm. There's a lot of wisdom in that. As I drove the 8.7-mile route from the farm to Boger, I passed Waterford, Shiloh Village, Cabarrus Crossing, Pelham Point, Wellington Chase, and Moss Creek, all of which are closer to Boger. It seems the plan should not necessarily be about the proximity of a neighborhood to Odell, but about the distance from Boger. If this was the case, and perhaps the only fair way to draw the lines, every one of those neighborhoods should be redistricted before the farm is even considered. Second, the Board indicated that the main reason for changing the second plan were that they would need fewer buses, and the farm is a higher-growth neighborhood. In the last 12 months, the farm has started 41 homes and closed 38. In the same time period, Pelham Point, Wellington Chase combined have started 36 and have closed 34. As you can see, the growth in these areas is almost identical. In fact, if you were to include the Enclave and Castle Brook Manor, the growth potential for the original neighborhoods would far exceed that of the farm. In the word of the Board, "Satellite-ing of a higher-growth neighborhood makes more sense." I'm not an expert on transportation logistics, but it seems that we need to move the same amount of children to two different schools instead of just one. If it takes five buses now, it should take five buses in the future, so I don't see a huge financial savings there. And finally, we believe to single out our neighborhood in this way seems prejudicial and could set a terrible precedent for future redistricting initiatives. Thanks for your time, and I wish you luck in the decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Please leave the farm alone.
For your three minutes. Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker, looks like we've got a young man, Sidney Smith, 3rd grade student out at Odell. Sidney, are you here? Here she is, young lady, all right. Come on up, Sidney. You may have to pull the mic down a little bit so you can speak to us. Thank you for being here, Sidney.
My name is Sidney Smith. I'm a 3rd grader at Odell. I have been going to Odell since I was in kindergarten. When I found out that I may to have to move to Boger, I was upset and told my parents that I did not want to go to a new school. I love Odell, and I have friends, so many friends, that I have made since beginning at Odell. I know the school and the teachers, and they know me. It is not fair to me and all the kids in my neighborhood that are going to have to move to Boger. I have two more months left at Odell, and I want to stay and finish out my last two years at the school so that I started at. My sister is supposed to start at Odell in the fall, and now she won't be able to go to the same school I went to and make the memories that I made with my friends and teachers. Please, I'm asking you to rethink your decision about moving me and the farm kids to Boger.
Thank you, Sidney. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our next speaker is Jeanne Smith, another Odell parent. Is Jeanne here?
I bet you're the mother to Sidney. Yes, I am.
Okay, all right.
Proud mama, so, yes. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. When I received the letter about our neighborhood possibly going to Boger, of course, as a parent, I was upset and frustrated and angry. I have this on my mind all the time. I understand somebody's got to move. I do understand that, but we are one of the farthest ones out, and I'm hoping that you guys would consider that. When we moved to North Carolina four years ago, I did a lot of research on the schools, the area we wanted to move to. I was moved a lot when I was a kid. Sometimes it's easy for kids, sometimes it was hard. I was one. It was hard. So when we moved, I made sure that we moved to an area that my daughter went to, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. That's what I wanted for my children. And now Sidney, being a 3rd grader, she's going to have to leave all her friends that she's gone to Odell with since kindergarten, that she plays soccer with. She's grown up with these kids since kindergarten, and to have to go to possibly Boger for 4th and 5th and make all new friends now again. And I have, like she said, I have another daughter that's going to be starting kindergarten in the fall. She's possibly going to be in the same situation as what my daughter is now. She'll be at Boger until she's in 4th grade and then have to leave Boger to go to Odell or to a new school. So now we're moving all these kids all over the place. I have a lot more, but I just don't have it all together. I have it together, but it's so hard when you're up here to what to say. I just want you guys to please just rethink everything and try to see what's best for all of our kids so that we're not moving them more than one time. Yes, this won't affect Sidney because she'll finish at Boger by the time a new school is built, but then I have a younger one that is going to affect her. So I wish that you guys would just think about everything before you decide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we want you all to feel comfortable too, by the way. We're just people. We're just people. You guys put us here, and so, you know, I want you to really feel comfortable when you speak to us. The next speaker we have is Ashley Landman. And Ashley, you're here? Okay.
Hi, good evening. I would also like to thank the Board for letting me speak tonight. I currently don't have any children at Odell Elementary, but I would have a kindergartner there in the fall of 2013. We look forward to joining the Odell family. All the kids talk about it all the time. My husband and I moved here five years ago from Florida. I'm a teacher. We've reached our schools, and we kind of picked it. I understand that lines move, kind of picked it far away from the line, thinking that this too wouldn't be a decision or that would ever have to be made. While our daughter doesn't attend Odell yet, I was alarmed to know that the decision that affects our family was being made without our knowledge. I'm curious as to why the entire neighborhood was not made aware of this potential change for next year. I feel that it would have been very easy for the county to send letters to all the farm residents, not just to students that are currently enrolled at Odell. It seems as though the Board was trying to hide this a little bit. I'm very thankful for my neighbors for posting on Facebook, and it was like, "We're moving", ping, pah, pah, ping, pah, ping, pah, ping, you know, getting everybody, but if you're not on that Facebook page, I mean, there was banners put up letting everyone know that this was going on, so I really appreciate that for them. As a teacher for almost 10 years, I do know that rezoning happens all of the time. However, I question how the farm, one of, again, the farthest communities from Boger is being rezoned while neighborhoods closer to Boger will remain at Odell. To me, it just seems that the farm is being singled out. I believe that areas that were mentioned in previous meetings are of equal size and equal growth and are almost half the distance to Boger. I'll now look at that map and see an island where we're just stuck behind Mecklenburg County and then other schools going to Odell while we're going to Boger. I've also been informed that this new school, and again, we've heard mixed things, you are going, you aren't going, it could make potential two to three moves for children. Being an educator, again, I know that this can be detrimental to children, that it is not in their best interest, that staying at one school and building that community and growing together and learning, especially in kindergarten and 1st grade, they need to be together, they need to stay together and grow together. So I would just ask the Board to really think about the decision before it's made, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. Our next speaker is Amanda Bradley.
Hello, everybody. I have a kindergartner at Odell this year. Thanks for allowing the residents of the farm the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding your second redistricting proposal. When the letter arrived stating that the first proposal was off the table and now the farm had been targeted for redistricting, I felt duped. I was upset and angry, and most of all confused as to why the first proposal had been changed. I couldn't understand why a plan that obviously took a lot of time, thought, and planning had suddenly been dropped, and the farm, which is the farthest neighborhood logistically from Boger and double the distance from my home, had been brought to the table. I know that redistricting has to happen. I understand the overcrowding. There just has to be a better way to go about it. Again, with the old Odell school, I know that there's cost involved in doing something like that, but maybe those other neighborhoods from the first proposal could, you know, go to the old Boger. In researching, I read an article that stated that there were two buildings at the old Odell in the back of the school that would need little to no renovation. It would just make sense to maybe start using those buildings instead of busing our children all the way to Boger. I know that there's cost involved with it, but there's cost involved in this proposal as well, and it's not just financial cost. I watched the first meeting, and I felt the other parents' passion and conviction for why they did not want their children moved. I'm standing here before you tonight with that same passion and conviction. My son Aiden started kindergarten this year at Odell and is already in full swing of his educational career. To move him now would hurt his educational, social, and emotional progression. With Boger being so far away from our home, not only would Aiden have to move elementary schools, but being a dual-income family, we would also have to move his after-school care, which has been a part of his life since he was only two years old. The other day during our drive home, my 5-year-old son out of the blue asked me why he was being kicked out of Odell. In his little voice, he told me that he had done everything I told him he was supposed to do, and he didn't want to be kicked out of his school since he was a good boy. I'm asking you to please find another solution to the overcrowding at Odell and do not punish the children that have already grown to love their school. The proposed plan is flawed from a developmental, logistical, and social perspective. Does the bottom fiscal line trump these fundamental ideals? I'm hoping that the answer is no. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Our next speaker is Rick Markley, another Odell parent.
Good evening. Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you and kind of explain our story as far as family. I know it's a pretty good melting pot here in Charlotte area. My family and I have been down from Michigan approximately a little bit over a year and a half. Our first year, we moved into the Odell School District intentionally to have our children attend the school. We moved from Charlotte, or to Charlotte, from our families. As our youngest daughter here, Chelsea, was going to start kindergarten, and we thought it very important to put them into a good school district. That being said, we rented in the Moss Creek subdivision. We went ahead and moved to the farms and just recently finished completion of building a home. So we've invested into the community based off of the school. We've literally moved 600 miles to basically 10 years, to the 10 Odell school. Kind of shocking to us that, you know, everything has kind of changed. We've been asked to have investment from us and from our children as far as to the school. My wife's a member of the PTA. My children both are very active in the school. My wife also teaches like math superstars. We're definitely committed to the school, and we don't feel that we were asked to be invested into it, and now here we're kind of left holding this. I did not move the family down to attend Boger. I don't know anything really too much about it, more than I know that that is not one of the schools that we selected when we did research the area, including the Boger Elementary School District. Again, it's kind of difficult to come up in front of you with the children that are now invested into the school as well, and we just really hope that you kind of look at your future as far as, I know that sustainable growth rate is one thing that you have to face, and it's, I'm not the only one that's moved down here. I understand that completely. I know there's a lot of choices that you have to make. In doing so, you know, you've talked about having 5th graders that can still go to the school as far as if they're bused in or they're... the school as far as if they're bussed in or they're not having to be bussed in, you know, whatever district that you have to come down in, I mean, you're gonna hear the same stories from anywhere you have to pick, but I would at least ask you that you look at, a grandfather an option if you don't have to have the transportation afforded to them. That would at least be, I think that would be somewhat fair. But the folks at the farms, I think they've all really kinda come there, they're looking at the maps and what we've gotten to talk at, and it just seems like the 360 is kinda beyond us, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markley. Excuse me, our next speaker is Stephanie Stevenson, another Odell parent.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Stevenson, and I am an Odell parent residing in the farm at River Point. Thank you for having us here tonight and for the opportunity to voice our concerns. I am the mother of a fourth grader and a first grader at Odell. The possibility of my two children going to two different elementary schools next year is more than upsetting. Although I do realize the overcrowding position with which we are faced is difficult, there has to be a better solution that does not include siblings being torn apart. My first question would be, why was the first recommendation withdrawn? With that recommendation, there were clear lines drawn satelliting communities located much closer to Boger Elementary. It takes approximately 4.6 miles to get to Odell from the farm at River Point and approximately 8.7 miles to Boger. That's almost double the distance resulting in a very long commute for our children, not to mention you have to pass four to five other subdivisions along the way, all of which would currently remain at Odell under the new recommendation and most are half the distance to Boger than the farm. Does this make the best sense? Not in my opinion. In addition to this, the most recent letter sent home to parents state that our children would not remain at Boger but would again be transferred either back to Odell or to the new school being built in two to three years. That would mean the possibility of my youngest attending three different schools before ever attending middle school. This is a definite area of concern because with the addition of approximately 88 children being transferred, Boger would then be close to capacity as well, which results in us being in the same boat next year. Kells Water is an actively growing subdivision in that area where 36 permits have been pulled. So now you have two subdivisions where the potential for growth is high, according to the theory from the latest letter, going to the same school that is close to capacity. What happens then? It would make more sense to transfer no-growth rural neighborhoods from Odell since there is already high-growth possibilities from this subdivision already in that Boger area. What do we know about the new school being built? Is there a clear timeframe or even a location in the works? I read the question-and-answer document on the Cabarrus County School website, and the answer to question 15 regarding using the old Odell School was to possibly use the two buildings on the back of the school. It was stated that both buildings are safe and clean, have up-to-date restrooms and clean water. The only expense would be related to air conditioning system. Could this be utilized for rising kindergarten until a new, more stable solution can be reached? It is obvious that there are still big questions out there that need answers before the best decision can be made. It seems to me that the second recommendation of only satelliting the farm at River Point was a hasty one with not a lot of planning or thought put into it since it came out only two weeks after the first recommendation was announced. In conclusion, I am pleading with you all to please put out a more organized, to put more organized thought with detailed planning into a fair and clear recommendation with our children's futures in mind, and not make this about finding quick, immediate relief for just one year for the same issues to possibly arise the following year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson, for coming. Our next speaker is Jody Hendricks, another Odell parent.
I'm an Odell parent who lives in the farm, and I stand before you tonight to drive home the point that this rezoning should not be based on who is the closest to Odell but who's the furthest away from Boger. In the original proposal of neighborhoods to be moved, there would have been 117 students moved to Boger, minus 37 students from that far northwest part of the county that everyone seemed to agree not to include. That left 80 students that could be moved from the original neighborhoods, that's half the distance from Boger than we are. Those 80 versus our 88, it's pretty close numbers, but it's not close in distance. You mentioned cost savings. I ask you, why is it costing so much more money in transportation dollars to move those neighborhoods that were your first choice closer neighborhoods than ours? I understand that they're more spread out, but they are spread out whether they're being picked up by buses for Odell or picked up for Boger. And Miss, by not stated at the last meeting, if more buses have to be bought for this, you're really just buying them early for the new school. This will also force our children to move more than once. In your letter, you acknowledge that you're not gonna keep busing us all the way to Boger once the new school is completed. This plan is telling us that they will move twice. But the children from the neighborhoods that are further east and therefore closer to Boger could be moved now and remain at Boger until middle school, therefore they'd only have to be moved once. Also, we're not growing at the rate that everyone perceives. Newly-built homes do not necessarily equal students that will go to our public schools. The farm has a large population of children that are homeschooled or go to private school. We have 12 families at homeschool that I know of, and I don't know everyone. We also have families whose children attend Pine Lake Prep, Community School at Davidson, Lake Norman Christian, just to name a few. So new homes doesn't necessarily mean new growth. We've also had builders pull out of the farm due to the land being so hard to develop. One of our newest neighbors has a boulder in his backyard that's 17 feet wide and six feet deep. There's impossible-to-develop land with rock behind those houses and throughout the rest of the vacant land. Have you considered that? The farm may not even get fully developed. And finally, the letter referred to Boger as our temporary satellite school? I feel that you're saying it's a temporary satellite school because you know in your heart of hearts that pushing the line further west to Jim Johnson Road, then up to Odell School Road, and then up to the county line, that's the only normal, acceptable, and fair way to redraw and rezone. We're not asking you for something unreasonable here, as those neighborhoods were your first choice for a reason. Please reconsider those reasons. It was mentioned at the last meeting that you actually have until December to decide, so please don't rush because you think drawing this out is agony and someone will always just oppose. Be sure you're making the right decisions for one move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Our next speaker is Cindy Avalon. And Cindy's another Odell parent, which all of yous are Odell parents. I shouldn't even say that, should I? Go ahead, Cindy.
Upon relocating four years ago to North Carolina and finally buying a home at the farm, we prepared for our son's future, not ours, but his. We mapped out for years down the road for not just the first or the second years of his life, but all, that included the schools that he would attend. I feel that it is not fair that the board has not properly planned for the expansion of surrounding neighborhoods. Based on your FAQs, it was stated that there has not been a spike in enrollment in either school. Enrollment has been steady over the last few years despite the sluggish economy. This should have been predicted prior to now, and the failure of long-term planning is impacting our children. Yes, children do adapt quickly, I agree with that, but their first day at Odell was already a traumatic one. They already went through those emotions, sleepless nights, uneasy feelings, making new friends, trusting teachers, and feeling like they don't belong. We entrust our children to the school and to the Board of Education that their welfare and education is always above the dollar amounts the board is going to save by eliminating three buses and $300,000. This perceived notion that we are the fastest-growing does not equate to more children. I feel that singling the farm out is not only poor planning but discriminatory. We, as a group, are being discriminated against based on perceived notion, focusing the word "perceived". You're restricting us as an entire group from opportunities that are and will be available to another group in the future. Why should my child go to Boger while a new family from another subdivision gets to enroll their child into my son's seat? A seat that was occupied by a child who will have to go through two consecutive years of traumatic stress, an entire family disrupted because of poor planning. Jake, my son, is extremely bright child, and we had him tested for early admissions. We are extremely proud that he is on track for AIG in December, and we love Sue. Step one, provide immediate relief to Odell. Shut the doors. For any new student, registrations must automatically go to Boger. These new children are already expected to go through the trauma of starting a new school, getting acquainted with a new routine, let them start with a school that they will probably be at for a while. Step two, cap 2013 rising kindergarten enrollment. Grandfather all existing students, including AIG students, to Odell to finish out their elementary career until the new school is built. Grandfather any rising kindergarten enrollment for existing families with children at Odell. Enrollment for all subdivisions, not discriminatory, with a first-come, first-served basis to fill kindergarten enrollment cap. Once the cap has been met, all other enrollments will automatically defer to Boger. Since the first day of school, August 27, 29 students have been enrolled at Odell and 10 students have been withdrawn. Please keep that in mind, you will always have withdrawals. Step four, once the new school is approved and built, at the point of, that would be the point, the Board of Education can clearly assess which subdivisions of students will be placed where. That is when those children should be moved to their respective locations, not shuffling them around like game pieces as a rushed solution or hasty. Step five, the Cabarrus County has a surplus of $14 million for 2012. Granted, this is not your surplus, but they spent $1 million in technology in Kannapolis Schools, including iPads for four-year-olds and preschool. I am all for technology, but the immediate need is a school. Instead of telling us how much money you are able to save on three buses, please petition the county for Relief Fund to help with an immediate need today to address the situation that we are in. Thank you, and I hope you reconsider keeping all of the children at Odell.
Thank you, Ms. Avalon. Our next speaker is another student from Odell, and that's Christopher Mills.
Thank you for letting me talk tonight. My name is Christopher Mills. I'm nine years old. I am a fourth grader at WR Odell Elementary School. In the last three years, my family has moved to, my family has moved, has had to move three times because of my dad's job. I have gone to three different schools in three years. The first two were in Florida, and the last year we moved here. My mom and dad told me this would be the last time I had changed schools because my dad had finally found a job he could keep forever. They also said that I will not be moving again because we found a great neighborhood to live in, so I will be able to stay in the same school. I've made a lot of great friends at Odell, but not all of them live in the farm. Most of them are in Moss Creek, so if I change schools again, I will have to leave all my new friends, just like when we moved here from Florida last year. It's hard to keep changing schools. I like Odell, and I like my friends from Moss Creek. I have a younger sister who's starting kindergarten next year. We are supposed to be in the same school together for the first year. It is my job to protect my little sister and make sure she's okay and not afraid. How am I able, how am I going to do that if she's not allowed to go to Odell? How am I supposed to sit next to her on the bus so she doesn't get scared? How can I do that if she is going to Boger and I'm going to Odell? I love my sister, and I want her to go to Odell with me. My mom and dad told me that I had, that I get to go to Odell as a fifth grader because you said it would be okay, but I'm afraid that my little, my sister will be too scared to ride the bus without me. And my mom and dad both work, and they won't be able to drive me or my sister to school. So that means if you make the farm go to Boger, all of my fourth-grade friends will still go to Odell, but I will have to ride the bus with my sister to make sure she doesn't get too scared to go to kindergarten, and I will have to go to Boger too. I wish that none of the kids from Odell would have to go to Boger. I wish that you could build a school in our neighborhood so my sister and I could walk to school together. I think you should make us go to Boger. I think you should not make us go to Boger because we all love our friends and teachers at Odell, and it would be bad to make us change now. When I went to third grade at Odell, I loved, I liked my teacher a lot. I like my fourth-grade teacher too, a lot, a lot too. I didn't like my teachers in Florida because I didn't think they were nice teachers. The teachers at Odell are nice and they're good teachers. I love my school. Please do not make me go to Boger. I want to stay at Odell, and all the younger kids want to go to Odell and not Boger.
Our next speaker is Tiffany Hamrick-Taylor.
My neighbors and I have many reasons for wanting this proposed redistricting to be changed. We are families with children in Cabarrus County Schools, and when we came here, we chose this location because of the school system's sterling reputation. But this proposal has made me question the leadership behind this school system because of its short-sighted, does not offer the best solution for the children of Cabarrus County, and sets a very dangerous precedence. As was stated in the previous school board meeting, there are 84 students expected to come to Boger next year from Trinity Crest, Pine Creek, and Afton Ridge Apartments. Including those students with the 88 from the farm would place Boger at 960 students, which would have it overcapacity in the first year after the change. Those numbers do not include Kells Water, a major project expected to have more than 500 residents. Homes are already being built there, but that growth has not even been considered. This solution would then in turn force our kids to go to multiple schools, as many as four different shifts in schools if Boger becomes overcrowded after the new recommendation. A 2008 study by researchers at Western Washington University and Washington University found that multiple moves of elementary school students often leads to declines in academic performance and classroom participation. That is not the best interest of anyone. All of that doesn't even address another pressing issue. What kind of precedence does it using satellite neighborhoods create? By creating districts using satellite neighborhoods, no residents in Cabarrus County is safe. If Cox Mill gets overcrowded, board members may decide to snatch a neighborhood like Kristen Berry and send them to Carl Farr. Moss Creek, the Mills at Rocky River, or any other kind of neighborhood could be moved to address temporary overcrowding issues, no matter where they lie on the redistricting map. None of this is acceptable to the residents of the farm, and it shouldn't be acceptable to the board either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Hamrick, for coming. Our next speaker is Josh Driver. Hey, Josh, you can start when you get ready.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Josh Driver, and my child is a third grader at Odell Elementary. However, unlike most of the parents in this room, I do not live in the farm. That doesn't mean that my child will feel the effects of this any less. For the last three and a half years, he has spent his time with kids from the farm. I've coached him myself. Over three and a half years, he's built trust, caring, and compassion for each one of these kids. What are we supposed to tell him at night when he asks us, "Where are my friends, and why? Why are they gone?" What are we supposed to tell him when he wakes up scared that he could be next to move away to some random school even though we live right there in Moss Creek? Redistricting the farm doesn't make any sense because it is the furthest away from Boger. Now, every one of us in this room, we have memories when we were kids from even when we were in kindergarten, and we can think about that kid that stuck his finger in his nose and how much of an impact that actually had on us when we were children, and how it helped form us as people today. We're not still sticking our fingers up our nose, I can tell you that. With that being said, this move disrupts and robs our children of the same opportunities that we had. Has anybody even thought about the psychological impact that it would have on the introverted child that shies away from every human being by looking at their shoes? Now that child is in, let's say, third grade, growing up, and now they're becoming a little bit more open, so we're gonna smash them right back into their shell and say, "Here's a bunch of people you don't know." And then, when they start getting comfortable again, we're gonna push their head right back in that shell, and say, "You go to another school back with the friends that you left previously, friends that you don't even know anymore." We are disrupting and destroying what they have. It is our jobs as parents, our jobs as teachers, nurses, role models, everything, to make sure that this cannot happen to our children. I coach in Odell. Matter of fact, I coached little Sydney, and she's one of the introverts that I was talking about. And now she's blossoming and blooming, and everybody knows her because she just has a great little personality. I just hope that every option is explored before our children are made to go through and suffer through all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driver. Our next speaker is Chris Edgerton.
Thank you for listening this evening. I understand the situation with overcrowding but do not agree with the proposed solution to move my rising third-grade son to Boger. My two older daughters attended Odell Elementary for their elementary career, and my son has been at Odell since kindergarten. You get a connection with the school and the teachers because of time and volunteering. My son currently has Mrs. Reed as a teacher. Neither one of my daughters had her, and when we walked in on the open house night, the first thing she said to us was, "Finally, I get one of your kids," because of the time we spent at the school and the connection. we spent at the school and the connection that we have with the teachers there. There are several reasons why I don't agree with the current proposal. One of, one is that we're the furthest neighborhood from Boger, which moves us further outside of our community. One of the board members quoted another parent from the last meeting when the, when someone had said, "You are moving my child out so a newer child moving near our neighborhood can attend Odell." Is this really the only or the best solution? Targeting one neighborhood that is further away does not seem like the only or the best solution. This is not necessarily keep familiar kids together, which is something I've read as to why we were chosen as a secondary proposal. Most of my son's best buddies live in surrounding neighborhoods, and we're moving him from his friends. I know you will say kids adapt so quickly, but if you volunteer at the school and you can see the kids on the playground, they quickly go to the other kids that have been in classes from previous years, and they find each other and they play. I agree with the board member's comment from last meeting, "Why are we making such a rushed decision? This is unlike how we've operated in the past, especially when it's about the kids." From the numbers I've heard quoted, Boger is also getting close to capacity. It seems we are trying to solve one problem and potentially creating another one. Other Boger neighborhoods are still growing also. It seems this could create a situation where some kids might have to move several times and maybe even return back to Odell or a new school. Moving kids, young kids especially, twice does not seem to make sense. In summary, you know, there's other neighborhoods that are seeing growth, and so why is our neighborhood being targeted, once again, is the furthest away? Why make such a rushed decision on the future of our kids? Take time to research better options. Many have mentioned the old Odell, capping current neighborhoods, or reviewing the redistricting lines, maybe taking out that northern corner. Why pick the neighborhood the furthest away is the point for me. We should avoid making decisions that will cause multiple moves, which this proposal potentially will do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Our next speaker is Charlie Pimentel, and this is a third grade student at Odell. Charlie, come on up. Mr. Kirk, I hope you get situated there.
I'm a third grader at Odell. My family has lived in the farm for six years. We built our house in this area, so my sister and I could go to Odell. Please reconsider switching us to Boger. My teacher, my speech therapist, and my friends are at Odell. Thank you.
Well, he had to say what he wanted to say quick, didn't he? That's good. Okay, our next speaker is Amber Wilcox, and is Amber here? Okay, Amber, come on to the podium. Are you speaking for a group or as a parent, or?
I'm actually speaking for the developer, Ryan Humes, whose homes that are being built currently in the farm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon?
That's still in minutes.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, still got three minutes.
Parents, okay, perfect. So I just wanted to come and speak and just make sure the numbers were correct, since you're making a decision based on the volume and sales growth for the farm. And I pulled some figures, and I don't know, some of the homeowners that made it here before me probably gave those figures to you, but when you're considering Pelham Point and Skybrook and Wellington Chase, looking at their sales are equal to the farm and what has been sold in the last couple of years. So for me, I guess my thought process is, why take the school, make it farther to go to Boger, when you've got three neighborhoods that are making up the same amounts? Like, if you look at last year's closings for those neighborhoods, they're 59 sales versus our 38 sales in the farm. And then if you look at the last 12 months of starts, they had 41, we had 41, and they had 57. So for me, it kind of makes more sense that you kind of grow from the school itself so that children aren't on the bus as long, and I think it's, in terms of the decision that you're making, is impacting a lot of children. I know that a lot of the customers who've come to purchase in the farm buy based on schools, and they've left homes that had schools that were farther away and were challenging for their children. So I think it's a big decision when you decide to bus children farther away than take them from schools that are right inside the neighborhood. So I just wanted you to reconsider your decision and think more clearly on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming, Ms. Wilcox. And our last speaker tonight is Ms. Jane Talon?
Talon.
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 Okay, welcome, and glad you're here.
Well, thank you for having me.
Yes.
I was gonna stop making noise. The upside to going last is everybody has stood before you and given you facts and figures, what's good, what's bad, why it should and shouldn't happen. And I agree with everything that they've said. We are the furthest development from Boger Elementary. I think it's silly to put our children's on buses even longer than they already are. My next-door neighbor is a Boger Elementary third or fourth grade teacher, and she's a wonderful person. I'm sure they do a wonderful job there. But we all came to Cabarrus County, we all came to the farm for a reason. My son was in CMS. We lived over in the university area, and when he was finishing his fifth grade year at Mallard Creek Elementary School, we decided there was no way he was gonna stay in Charlotte Mecklenburg. So we started doing our research, and we ended up at the farm. So in January of 2009, we closed on our house, bought our house in the farm, let our son finish out his year at Mallard Creek, knowing that he was gonna start Harris Road Middle in the fall, and that was our plan. I have a kindergartner, a son who is in Ms. Murray's class at WR Odell, and I have a seven-year-old daughter who is in Mrs. Lister's class at Odell. So when you talk about redistricting, this affects more than half of my children. And we want to talk about stability. My son is very much an introvert like other parents have talked about, and to rip him away from something that he's become comfortable with. He was fortunate enough that he got to know my son, my daughter's kindergarten teacher last year, and he was very fortunate to end up in Mrs. Murray's class this year. And for him, that was a godsend, because I was scared to death he would not even get on the bus to go to school, and that every morning we would have a battle, and I was fortunate that didn't happen. He loves to go to school. He loves to get on that bus, he can't wait to get out that door, and he can't wait to get into Mrs. Murray's class. And I'd be very upset if that changed, because I think that will continue in the following years. He loves his big sister, he loves to follow her, and when she loves Odell, he loves Odell. And I have never seen a child so invested in a school and her teachers. Last year, she was, "Let me clean the tables in the lunchroom, let me do this, Mrs. Murray, what can I do for you? Ms. Blakeney, what can I do for you? Who can I help?" And not that I think Boger is a bad school, I mean, you can't dispute the test scores, they are lower, but Odell has given them stability. It has given them somewhere where they know they can go, they're familiar with the school, they've become familiar with the other students. And I just hate to think that we spent so much time researching, so much time doing our homework, and that it's all gonna be gone like that, because that really seems how quickly this potential redistricting was talked about. One day, we get a letter saying, "This is who's gonna get redistricted." The letter was confusing, so I called the school, and I was told, "No, you live in the farm, you don't have to worry about it, it is not going to affect you." And all of a sudden, there's a sign in my neighborhood, there's a public meeting, "You guys are gonna get redistrict after all." And that was very upsetting, very frustrating. So as a parent, to what I'm assuming, our parents on the board here, please don't take our students from the furthest point in the county and put them in a school, whether it's Boger or anywhere else, that's gonna keep them on those buses for longer, that's going to, you know, be a problem with their emotional health. And my time is up, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talon, very well spoken. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that's all the speakers that I have lined up for tonight, and unless the board has anything that they want to say, you know, we're gonna call for a motion that the public hearing be closed. Let me just go ahead and do that, because the public hearing, you know, we're through with the speakers. So may I have a motion that we close the public hearing?
I'll move.
A motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is officially closed, and that's all the business that we have on schedule for tonight was just this, because as I told you in the very beginning, this was a specially-held, specially-called meeting, so you, the parents of Odell, could come and voice your opinions and your thoughts and concerns to us. And I can just tell you for my own self, yeah, I'm a parent, too. I'm a grandfather, too. And I, you know, have had to go through this in my earlier years, and when you live in a county such as Cabarrus County, everybody wants to come here, and they bring their children, and when they do, then the schools fill up, and we are in a very difficult situation when we have to redistrict. I don't know of any of the board members that wants to move children, and I don't know of any children that want to move. You get to your school, you like where you're at, you make friends, all the things that you've told us tonight, we are very much aware of that. We know the children, you know, especially those that have a harder time relating than others, and when they just, you just get them going, we realize that, but then again, that doesn't take away the situation that we're in. But anyway, I just want to ask the board members, and if anybody, you know, wants to have anything, any comments or anything, Miss Minnick, you have any comments you want to add to the meeting tonight? If you do, we'll start and just come your way down, and after that, we're gonna adjourn the meeting.
My, my only comment is, when will we be discussing this as a board?
Next, the fifth.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter, do you have any comments you want to say?
Well, I want to thank everyone for all their emails, did read them. There was one of the parents, I think it was number 12, was it Cindy, is it Avalon? Avalon?
Yes.
I, I don't know, I think it was, was it, was it her? One of them had a list of things. She laid out a plan-type thing. Was that her? Was it, was it you? Did you have that written out by any chance?
Yeah, with a lot of scribble on it, but yes.
I, I would, I, I don't know if I could get a copy of, I, I was interested in a lot of the things that you said, but I do want to thank each and every one of you that were here tonight, and I appreciate all the comments. And again, I still stand firm on, I really do not want to see these children moved, and I want us to really look at all the plans that we have before us, and I still stand very firm on what I said before.
Thank you, Ms. Talon. Mr. Cogger, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I just add one thing?
Yes, you may.
I did want to, to bring the point up that the old Odell has no gym, no cafeteria, no library, so it's, it's not a complete facility by any means.
And to my knowledge, the board is, at this time, does not support using that, so it's not an option at this time. Mr. Cogger, you have some comments?
Well, not to be redundant, I just want to thank you all for coming. I appreciate the passion with, with which you spoke, and the fact that you're here and involved with your child's education means a lot. It means a lot to them, and it means a lot to our system. This is very, very difficult. It's the most difficult thing that we do, and we just do ask that, you know, at the end of the day, the question was asked numerous times rhetorically, whether we were gonna act in the best interest of the children, and the answer to that question is, is yes. It, it may be, however, it may be defined different ways by different people, but in our view of the entire district and what we've got to do, we continuously strive to make sure that we are acting in the best interest of the children that we're trying to educate.
Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Ms. Furtinbaugh, you want to add some comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify that, you know, even for, to Ms. Carpenter's comments, some children have to move. If it's not the parents who represented their children or the children present at the last public hearing, it's this group or some combination of those two. And to that point, Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask for our attorney, even though there was a reference that the other redistricting plan is off the table, in my longevity on this board, sometimes we've done a mix and match, and I just wanted to confirm that no one can take it off the table except this board, the first plan.
I do think the board, the board would have decision, the decision to make on those plans. I think that's right. If the board wanted to go back to that other plan, you could. If you wanted to consider other plans, you could. You may need to, depending on how that plan is, we could talk about whether there's further requirements for hearings if you're doing some kind of blending.
Right, I'm referencing, you probably remember, several years back, we, we had one, two, or three plans, and I know Mr. Clutz certainly remembers this, that, and we took this part from Plan One and that part from Plan Two and abandoned Plan Three or something of the sort. So I just, I have some questions for staff, and I just wanted to know if, from principle, there was a reference to it's off the table, and my understanding is this board did not vote on taking anything off the table. So we have two plans right now.
That's my understanding, too. I don't think the, the board wanted to hear other options, you know, have a different recommendation.
Right.
But the board can accept all part or none of the recommendations from staff.
Right, okay, thank you.
The board's free to do what it wants to do.
And I don't want to give anybody false hope, because I really believe that, from the entire perspective, that this is probably the better, nothing's best, but the better of the options, but I just wanted to clarify that that's the possibility.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh, some points well taken. Mr. Fur, you have any comments?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay, all right, and thank you, Mr. Don Ricky, for your input also. Well, ladies and gentlemen, you see the heart of the board, excuse me, yes?
Could I just make one, one, and I'll make it real short. I know that the commissioners are going to be voting, coming up for the money for the school, and the only thing that I would really, really like to say is for them, please, to give us the money for the school. That would, the finance for the land, land for the school, because that's what we need more than anything, and because we can't do anything if we don't have that, and that would be before anything, so that's what we need.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, and you're right, and the, the problem is, and some of you folks may ask, and then I'll adjourn the meeting and we'll all go home, you'd say, "Well, why haven't we built another elementary school before now? And why is this all of a sudden coming up?" Well, it was pretty clear that when the economy failed a couple of years, several years ago, and they did their tax revaluation, and then they had the deficit and all the different things that affected the county budget, well, we were told that there would be no more schools, four to five years, no more schools. Matter of fact, you know, I made mention in our last, when I was, went to the commissioners' meeting just recently, and I reiterated to them that the Mount Pleasant Middle School was supposed to have done, been replaced and open next year. And at that time, the elementary school in the northwest area was somewhere six, seven years down the road back then. So what happened was, was we got behind the eight ball again, and the growth continued, even though it recessed economy, the growth kept coming, and, and here we are, four, five years down the road, and, but I can tell you, though, that we are actively, we have a land committee that's composed of board members from our board and from the county, and the staff here, that they are actively looking for property. They've got several good prospects up that way, and, you know, what we'll end up with, we don't know. Hopefully, we'll be getting some news pretty soon, though, as to where this site is potentially gonna be, and, and of course, it's gonna affect everybody in that area there, but until we know where it's gonna be, we can't really, we don't have a crystal ball, none of us do, and we just know that we've got to deal with the issue. And so anyway, all I can ask is, people might say, "This is not politically correct," but for me, you know, all I can say is, is you just pray for us, is all I can ask you to do, that we'll make the right decision to do what would be right, you know, for all of the children, not just Odell, but for all the children, because we got 40 schools in our district, and we want it to be fair for everyone. And with that being said, Dr. Shepherd, do you have a comment I'd like for you, too? Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just want to say I appreciate the folks coming out tonight, appreciate Ms. Marsh coming and supporting her community. It's one of the great things about our school leaders, they're very supportive of, of the parents and the students in those schools, and thank you for that. Also want you to know that Ms. Bifer and her staff at Boger are excited about the change that's going to occur, and I want to assure the parents that, whether it's this group that's moved, or whether it's the group that was mentioned before, whomever, that we want to assure you that we will help in the transition, and that we will do everything we can to make sure that children are welcomed and, and are received, and that it is as stressless as possible. It's difficult for anyone, but we will, we will do all that we can to support children as they make a transition. And thank you tonight, board, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Okay, with that being said, board members, do I have a motion that the public hearing, I mean, that our meeting be adjourned?
Send me a second.
Have motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that being said, good night to our listening audience, and good night to all of you for being here, and thanks again for your hospitality and all the good things you did. Good night.